Uh, we're here today to discuss the proposed increase in sewer rates for the city of Salem. The main reason for these increases is the rising costs associated with the operation and maintenance of our sewer system. Additionally, the development of an update capacity management operations and maintenance, CMOM, plan is a significant factor. This CMOM plan outlines essential improvements and best practices for the maintenance and monitoring of our sewer collection system. Specifically, our updated CMOM calls for increasing the number of staff in our sewer department to ensure we maintain proactive and effective oversight in our sewer infrastructure. The proposed rate adjustments are necessary to support these enhancements and ensure the long-term reliability and efficiency of our sewer services. The proposed changes to the monthly residential and commercial sewer rates within the city's limits are as follows. The base rate will increase from six dollars to twelve dollars, and the volume rate per thousand gallons will increase from eight forty-eight to nine eighty-five. For customers outside the city limits, both residential and commercial, the base rates will increase from twelve dollars to twenty-four dollars. And the volume rate per thousand gallons will increase from ten dollars and sixty-four cents to twelve dollars and thirty-five cents. For the properties without a water meter, the monthly sewer rates will be as follows. The first unit will increase from seventy-nine dollars and nineteen cents to ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And each additional unit will increase from fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents to sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. We appreciate your understanding and looking forward to hearing your questions or your concerns you may have during this public hearing. At this time, I will open it up if anybody would like to speak at this public hearing for the sewer rating increases. Does anybody? Come on up, Dave.
Wasn't planning on this, but I had a question. Let me ask you, will you be answering questions? Is this on?
Well, are we, is staff answering questions? We'll ask you later on. This is right now, we're just at a hearing, just to hear your concerns or anything like that.
So you're not gonna answer the questions?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're.
Don't answer questions?
Yeah, just a public hearing, just to hear what your concerns are. This time, if there's no one here to speak at this public hearing, I will go ahead and call a regular meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for pledge allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this community. We ask that you guide and direct us in everything that we say and that we do as we make decisions that affects our community. Pray for every leader in the city, or county, or state, and our country. Pray for our country, Lord. We think for everything that you do for us, in Jesus' name do we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next up is real call. I am president. Alderman Dent.
Here.
Alderman Bowler, yes.
Present.
Alderman Whelan.
Here.
Alderman Cisco Zabson. City Administrator Burbidge.
Present.
City Clerk Koller.
Present.
City Attorney Weber.
Present.
Uh, Director of Public Works. Director Payne.
Present.
Chief of Police Chase.
Present.
And financer, director, finance director is Daisy Houston. And I see that we have Josh Hunt from the wastewater treatment.
Present.
And tonight due, the next item up is the approval of tonight's agenda. I'd be up to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Next item up is the consent agenda. I'd be up to approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Dent?
Yes.
And Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
All right, moving along. Next up is, we have public comment. Mr. Eddie Fleetwood, come on up, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, today about nine thirty in the morning, I was beside the city parking lot behind the city administration office and noticed a city employee come out the back door, went to their vehicle, and commenced to smoking a cigarette on city property. It is my understanding that this city has passed section two four zero point oh four zero prohibiting a prohibition of smoking in outdoor public places where it is supposed to be illegal or prohibited to smoke on all outdoor property owned, leased, or operated by the city of Salem. And then we passed section two forty point oh seven zero enforcement and says that the chapter shall be enforced by the city administrator, code enforcement officer, or the police department when authorized as we need. I guess my concern is, is if we're enforcing this ordinance at the city park during baseball games and other activities that are being held at the city park, why are we not doing this at all city property? It feels almost a little discriminatory, um, kinda outlined, looking at this. You know, during the Fourth of July parade, I was in the parade, noticed several people smoking during that event. Pretty sure the ordinance was passed to prevent smoking. I understand there's a lot of people there, pretty hard to enforce the code. Um, but, I mean, if we're gonna enforce it for one thing, we gotta be fair and equal and enforce it across the board, in my opinion. Appreciate your time and listening to my opinions.
Thank you. Next item up is the bids. You got the Salem TAP downtown project, get approval? Does any of the board members have any questions? I don't.
Do you have any questions on it? What was it? I think they should probably just share details about this project and kind of MoDOT's recommendation on this bid here.
Okay, uh, so as you're all aware, as you're all aware, uh, this project has been extended much longer than what we had hoped would be, um, the most recent kind of delay. We had let bids out, open bids, um, and then ran into a few issues with the low bidder and submitted to MoDOT requesting concurrence, um, after they had done their due diligence and finally gotten back to us. They chose, uh, or determined, um, that we needed to move forward with the second lowest bidder because the first lowest bidder did not meet all of the bid requirements as outlined through federal guidelines because the money is ultimately federal funds coming through MoDOT. Um, and so that's their recommendation in your packet right after the staff summary is MoDOT letter of concurrence for moving forward with the lowest, or the second lowest bidder. Um, so, do you want more detail, or is that?
No, I appreciate that. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for?
I don't.
Yeah. All right, it's time to write up a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Bowler, yes. And Alderman Dent?
Yes.
All right, next up is Ms. Lady Business. We have resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Salem, Missouri and the Merrimack Regional Planning Commission for Technical Assistance Services.
Thank you. This time I'll open it up for comments from the board, questions.
I don't have any questions, seems like.
I don't have any.
I don't either.
All right, do you have a motion for resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-four?
I'd be up to approve of resolution number sixteen dash twenty twenty-four.
A second.
If there's no further questions, I'll call for the vote. Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
And Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Next up is resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving a temporary construction easement between Herschel Mosher, Julia Mosher, Kenneth Tyler, Cheryl, and the city of Salem, Missouri, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Is this the area out on the hospital?
Yes. This is the, oh, the area that was made for new well and water.
Right, new well and tower. And so this one is the temporary, so this step, sorry, the staff summary covers both easements, so you have two terms. Um, one is a temporary construction easement, it's a little expired in a future term. The other one is a permanent utility easement for future maintenance.
And while the board doesn't have any further questions, do you have a motion for resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-four?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Bowler, yes. And Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Next up is resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four.
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Salem, Missouri to execute a utility easement agreement with Herschel Mosher, Julia Mosher, and Kenneth Tyler, Cheryl.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Next up is the first readings of bills. First up is bill number thirty-six seventeen.
Bill number thirty-seven, thirty-six seventeen, an ordinance establishing rates for the electric services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Any questions from the board? I know this is the first reading, but Sally, I think she kind of shared the staff summary there.
Right, so, uh, the board had previously approved, uh, at least three or four other sections of code, um, adjusting or amending the utility rates. Um, this one was inadvertently left out. It impacts one business in town, and so this is just to make sure that we get it along where the others are. Um, the net effect is that there will be one month delay in this.
Moving along, next up is bill number thirty-six eighteen.
Bill number thirty-six eighteen, an ordinance establishing new rates for sewer services provided by the city of Salem, Missouri.
Time to, does the board have any questions?
Nope.
Got this thing. All right, next up, bill number thirty-six twenty.
Bill number thirty-six twenty, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the city of Salem, Missouri, beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and appropriating funds pursuant to their due.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Alderman Dent? Yeah. All right, next up is bill number thirty-six twenty-one.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-one, an ordinance of the city of Salem, Missouri, to authorize the mayor to execute contracts between the city of Salem, Missouri and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to aid in shoulder resurfacing at Route J and MacArthur Street locations.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
All right, moving along. So, next is the first and second reading of bill number thirty-six nineteen.
Bill number thirty-six nineteen, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Salem, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign an MPUA mutual aid agreement. Permission to read second reading, by catch and all?
Yes, please.
Bill number thirty-six nineteen, an ordinance, ordinance of the city council of the city of Salem, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign an MPUA mutual aid agreement.
Thank you. This time I'll open it up to the board.
Talked about this at the last meeting?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right, just making sure. This time, do I have a motion for bill number thirty-six nineteen?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Next up is bill number thirty-six twenty-two.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Salem, Missouri, to execute a contract with Donald Magai Incorporated for downtown sidewalk improvements. Permission to read second reading, by catch and all?
Yes, please.
Bill number thirty-six twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Salem, Missouri, to execute a contract with Donald Magai Incorporated for downtown sidewalk improvements.
Thank you. This time I'll open it up to the board. Have you guys got any last questions or comments?
None.
All right, do I have a motion for bill number thirty-six twenty-two?
I make a motion to approve bill thirty-six twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I will call for the vote. Alderman Whelan?
Yes.
Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Dent?
Yes.
Next up is reports of city officials, boards, and committees. Mr. Richard, up first, man.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I do want to give a quick update and kind of share some information, um, concerning our utility system and our, um, AMI system. Um, so first of all, there's been a lot of stuff out in the public about faulty meters and things not working right, and I want to put some things in perspective. We've had a lot of discussion about the system not working correctly. And so, total, we have four thousand eight hundred and seventy meters in our system. That's water and electric combined, okay? Of that, we have six percent that are not reading through the system, okay? So when you put that into perspective, um, the staff time and everything that we were spending prior to going into the system, it took them an entire month to read all of those meters, going house to house on foot, checking all the meters. So we now have one guy who does this. Like I said, that's six percent that's not reading. Um, and so that is something we're continuing to work on, but I mean, in the big picture, that's a really small number. Um, we did have a training with NextGrid about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Um, and so it's gonna take us a little while to work through all of the things that they work with us on and show us to do. Um, and we're still looking forward to a date where we will have in-person training, where they'll have someone here in the field. Um, this training was virtual, and it was all stuff on the system itself. So like I said, we are already working on and implementing that information. So, um, I just wanted to kind of share some of that, that that is happening, that, like I said, I want to put that in perspective for folks that the amount of meters that are not pulling through the system is six percent. And we are not without a way to read meters. You know, our guys were manually reading them prior to the system. They manually read those that don't come through now. So it's still getting reads, it's still getting the most accurate information possible. So that's all that I have.
Anybody got any? How many more years do we have on that contract?
Five more years.
Five more years. Don, you have something?
Sally, who all attended the training?
Uh, myself, Stacy, our finance director.
Okay.
Um, um, Steve, our public works director. We had Chris Maburk, our watering superintendent. We had Will Malone, our meter tank.
Okay.
Um, and Shannon Letchworth, our utility building.
Okay. And that was everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We are the ones, the primary ones who work within that system, sorry. And Josh Gachanoff. Oh, sorry, thank you. Right, like their superintendent.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
That it?
Yeah.
John, your second.
Turn around, you leave.
Just having a chat. And next up is my report. I don't have, not a whole lot to, just, I just wanted to touch up and thank everybody that participated in, uh, the four H that happened this past weekend, uh, or future kids that are involved with the farmers, that are future farmers. I mean, it's become, and we were able to eat every day. So, uh, just want to thank everybody that participated and all the businesses that participated in it. That's all I have for my report. Next person up is Mr. Payne.
Alderman. Alderman.
Testing.
Alderman, mayor, thank you for this opportunity. Um, so for the twenty-third of July wastewater treatment plan, I'm gonna start out there because, uh, Josh Hunt here has been working diligently to try to get out and do the smoke testing today and find out where our, some of our I and I problems are on our, one of our major trunk lines, sewer trunk lines, and that went well today. I think we found several spots, Josh found several spots that were taking on substantial water that flow into our sewer plant, caused this problem, so. Uh, daily testing will continue tomorrow, as well as there are continuing test runs down Springfield with samples and such. We're gonna do interviews on Friday, hopefully for a possible laborer to help with the, um, sewer plant projects, so. Water department, uh, we had well number four that went down, uh, possibly due to a lightning strike. Everything points at that. So, water department and electric department, uh, teamed up and troubleshoot that till they figured out it was dead. And then Flynn, our contractor, came in and replaced the, the well pump itself, uh, along with some of the wiring. So that was a, a big substantial, uh, project. Keeping on, they're keeping on top of the existing pumps and system turbidity, making sure that we, uh, put out as best quality water as we can while that well is down. Uh, they repaired water line break at Salem Hospital. Uh, we have two physicians open, hoping to, uh, do interviews on Friday for those, and backfill those positions. Uh, two of our backhoes are down, so that kind of slowed some of the progress with the water department and, and construction department. Uh, let's see, the electric department, uh, worked three service upgrades, worked extensively on the troubleshooting well four, fixed repairs, several streetlights. Um, as those come in, those complaints about streetlights, which I appreciate because I'm not always out at night, we can, uh, have them come out and take a look. Uh, they did three service upgrades, conducted multiple locates, uh, worked to ensure the AMI antennas are functioning properly. So, we have highlighted one zone in town that possibly could benefit from a tower and, and an AMI, uh, reception antenna there. So that's something that Sally and I have been looking at, so. Construction department, uh, worked on water spillway over off of Jennifer Boulevard. We, we've just had, uh, constant complaints over there from the neighborhood below, uh, Alderman Bowler Jack, so we're trying to, we're trying to, uh, fix that. Worked on clearing, uh, cleaning out the bays and, uh, uh, cleaning out the bays, sorry, at the Salem Animal Shelter and sealing the bays up so that we could take on more pets. We're at about thirteen, thirteen canines, I believe, at this time. Uh, poured new sidewalk patch on Warful and Pershing, poured a new sidewalk patch on Warful where the power pole was, uh, hit and replaced. Assisted, uh, the construction department helped me repaint the dog shelter so that it looks better than what it used to. Assisted public, um, I'm sorry, conducted meetings with superintendents on the NextGrid initiative was the other thing that I had for everybody that Sally already talked about. Um, I think it was very helpful and it will, uh, continue to whittle at this and hopefully gain some ground on some substantial room, so. Did anybody have any questions?
I have one, Steve. When do you think the, uh, smoke test will be completed and your results formulated?
For this line, we're looking at tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And we'll, uh, we'll put together cumulative report.
Okay.
Share that with you.
All right, thank you. And Steve, how far does this trunk line that you're just gonna test in, or does it start, or does it stop?
It started over near Swartz's, um, auto body salvage yard and continues all the way down. We're doing the trunk line all the way down to the sewer plant.
Okay.
So it wraps a substantial distance and hopefully Josh was wearing his tick spray because he's quite a good agent. They were all over that out there in the woods and tracking this stuff down. You know, there's, there's a lot, a lot of, uh, line out there for sure. And so they, they found some good stuff.
Well, I see trunk line, I'm just trying to, you know, give the public kind of perspective of where we're starting or where we're stopping.
Sewer main line.
Josh is so happy over there, getting all their work.
Yeah.
That's it? All right.
Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Stacy, next time, if you have something, man.
So this is just a, um, look at how we ended our fiscal year twenty-four. So sales tax revenues are down two percent compared to last year to June of this year. But year to date, we are slightly up one percent for the year. Um, on general fund sales tax revenues, at the end of the fiscal year, just slightly under two point five million, with eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand of that being additional sales tax. That's about nine percent more than what we had budgeted. On parks and recs, sales tax revenue brought in around five hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is slightly more than what we had budgeted. Capital improvement sales tax revenue brought in around seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which is slightly more than what we had budgeted. For those who like to see trends, the graph shows a month-by-month comparison for the fiscal year twenty-four and then the two prior years. Okay, next. Okay, this next page is an overall look at utility usages and revenues. We have sold around fifty point two million kilowatt hours. That is down four percent compared to same time period as last year. Electric sales is just under seven point one million in revenues, which is just slightly under what we had budgeted. Purchase of power, we have paid out four point five million. That's around two percent more than what we spent last year and seven percent less than what we had budgeted. Water consumption, we built just over one hundred and thirteen million gallons. That is down quite a bit compared to last year. Water sales revenues is at eight hundred and six thousand. That's around four percent less than what we had budgeted. On sewer consumption, we build out around one hundred and three million gallons, which comes to around one point one billion in revenues. That's around four percent less than what we had budgeted. Okay, next slide. Okay, this page is a list of all of our funds. It shows the activity, activity in each fund for fiscal year twenty-four. It shows the beginning balance as of July first, two thousand twenty-three, and the revenues, expenditures, and any transfers between funds. And the last column shows the ending balance in that fund as of June thirtieth. And if you look at the very bottom of the slide, it tells all the funds come to a total of ten point nine million to end this year. Okay, next page. Okay, this page shows the total fund revenues and expenditures compared to what we budgeted. For revenues, we have brought in eighty-eight percent of what we budgeted for the year, and we have expended seventy-six percent of what we had budgeted. The large variance between year-end totals versus budget is due to grant projects we have in progress. We anticipated we further longhand on projects, therefore we have not expended or have been reimbursed for most of these projects. And then this slide, I added this to my report. It's the major funds, just to look, to see how we compare to budget. So revenues for the general fund and parks fund came in more than budgeted, while expenses came in less than budgeted. Capital improvement revenues and expenses came in quite a bit less than budgeted. That is due to the TAB grant, which is the downtown project. That has not started yet. And then the last slide is the utility operating funds. Electric revenues came in more than what we budgeted. Electric revenues came in more than what we budgeted, the expenses came in less than budgeted. And water and sewer funds, both revenues and expenses came in more than what we had budgeted. Any questions?
Very good, thank you.
I have no report.
Alderman Whalen?
No report.
Alright, at this time, uh, I would need a motion to go into closed session personnel. I'm going to go into closed session for personnel.
A second.
I'll call for the vote. Alderman Bowler, yes. Alderman Whalen?
Yes.
And Alderman Dent?
Yes.